Good evening, I'd like to call the December 6th session of the City of Delaware Planning Commission meeting to order. Could the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Pearl?
Here.
Mr. Bonnet?
Here.
Councilman Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Here.
Chairman Simpson?
Here. Item number two on the agenda, the approval of the motion summary of the planning commission meeting held on November 1st, 2017, as reported and transcribed.
Make a motion, we accept the November 1st, 2017, minutes as recorded and transcribed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Halter, second by Mr. Bonnet. Could the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnet?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
It's alright.
You could have elbowed me there.
Oh, thanks. I do a good enough job on my own. Thank you.
Item number three, regular business. Could the clerk please read that into the record?
Item A, Communities at Glen Ross, Section 12, Number 1, 2017-2814, a request by Pulte Homes for approval of a final development plan for Communities at Glen Ross, Section 12, for 48 single-family lots on 14.796 acres on properties on R2 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located south of Cheshire Road and west of Winterborne Drive on Salstice Road and Hollyberry Lane. Item 2, Case #2017-2815, a request by Pulte Homes for approval of a final subdivision plat for Communities at Glen Ross, Section 12, for 48 single-family lots and 14.796 acres on property zone R2 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located south of Cheshire Road and west of Winterborne Drive on Salstice Road and Hollyberry Lane.
Yeah, give you some history on this site. It was approved, original development was approved in 2006. Last August, Planning Commission Council amended the rezoning, Plenary, and Plenary subdivision plat for Communities Glen Ross 11 through 22, which is south of Cheshire Road. You can see on this site, it's just east, or just east of Glen Ross Golf Club, fairly flat out there, farmland. Then, earlier this year, we approved Section 11, which is in yellow on the screen of Glen Ross. Now they're coming in for Section 12, and total, there is 106 detached condominiums. This is condominium section of the development. Section 12 is actually 48, is the remainder of the, of the original 106. From an engineering perspective, the engineers are still reviewing the site plans, or engineering plans. Access to this site is, this is located just south of the roundabouts, the new roundabout on Cheshire Road, and east of Winterborne, you access it through Salstice Drive, through Section 11 to Section 12, which is the southern portion of this. All the streets in this subdivision will be public, and would have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Pedestrian connectivity on Winterborne Drive, there would be a bike path that extends from Cheshire Road and ultimately, south to the end of the development. From that point, there's a reserve area, the southern portion of this section has about a four-acre reserve area, and that bike path, a pedestrian path would extend from that bike path, east to west, to the road, to the, the public road to the west, and then would extend north to the other public road into subdivision. Here's the layout, it's your typical subdivision layout, this is the bottom loop of it, if you will, the southern loop of it, double, uh, double street, or it's got, you got a, what word am I trying to think of? Yeah, you double-sided streets on this, typical subdivision would have. Also, you can see there's a four-acre reserve area just south of this, that's where the bike path would extend from east to west, there's a retention pond in that area, and there's also room some, for some amenities in that four-acre area. Entire development would be within a homeowners association, that would have common maintenance, planning for lawn, landscaping, and snow removal, which is different than the other sections 11 and 12 would have, active remainder of the subdivision would not. Landscaping and screening, there'd be street trees along the two public streets in this section, and also, they're proposing 175 trees in this, the street trees and all the trees in the reserve area. The open space parkland, there's a open space just south of Salstice Drive, in the center, northern portion of the reserve area, there'd be a few amenities in there, which would include a gazebo, a pickleball court, and a golf chipping and putting green. Also, as discussed previously with the developer, the applicant shall allocate space in this reserve area for a potential pocket park in Section 13, which is located just south of this site. Tree preservation, the applicants removed 19 trees that equal 209 caliper inches. As I just indicated earlier, they're installing 175 trees that equal 382 caliper inches, so they achieve compliance with the tree preservation ordinance. The lighting plan was approved by the chief building official on November of this year, and also, they are not proposing any new sign in this area, that's the plat itself. Here's some of the ranch houses that they're proposing. Development text requires that the 25% of the front elevation be in natural materials, dimensional shingles on this, then it would also have to meet the other base minimum design standards for residential houses in the city. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan with seven conditions, and the final subdivision plat with seven conditions. You have to answer any questions you may have.
So, over the, over the last month or so, the emergency access drive, can we talk about that a little bit? Because it, it's now paved, almost like a one-lane road, but prior to that, it looked like they were about to build a, you know, a four-lane highway for an emergency access drive. All the heavy equipment was stationed there, including the porta-johns right off the road. I, I hope that's not the plan going forward. And you've got neighborhood, you've got a neighbors right there, with heavy equipment, sitting right in their front yard, type of, almost, type of thing.
Yeah, you're right, that area was kind of the main construction entrance. The pavement went down for that emergency access, just in the last couple of days. So that is put in place, and I drove by there earlier this evening, and a lot of that equipment is out of there, and I don't anticipate that being used any further as a construction material or equipment staging area.
Part of the reason why that was being used as the lay-down areas, because they were in process of constructing the roundabout, and they had planned the construction entrance to be south of that area, but it was causing complications with getting vehicles in and out to do that construction. So they relocated to where they were, where the access to drive is, and do not believe it'll continue to be the staging area.
Long-term, that'll go to, there's a landscaping plan around it with some trees.
Yes. Yeah, I remember the landscaping plan.
So as soon as the construction is off of these phases, as the engineers just described, then, then that will occur, obviously not in the way.
Any other questions for staff?
I only have a, I guess I have a comment, a question. Signage for the park, and I know we've addressed this before on other quote-unquote, I don't know, association parks or whatever, noting that they're open to the public, and, and that there's, is there a plan in place that you're aware of, I don't know if you've been working with Ted, is there any type of consistent signage to be put across all these different, similar-type parks, so people know what they are?
No, not for HOA-maintained parks, and in part, in terms of the consistency, beyond the words "open to the public." And part of that is intentional, in that these are HOA-maintained parks, we don't want to put the city brand, or somehow denote that they are city-owned parks. In this case, Glen Ross has its own branding and wayfinding signage that will continue through this section, as I understand it, and it's, the sign would definitely say, whatever it's gonna say, plus "open to the public," in that regard. Now, when it's a city-owned park, then we are going through a process with Guide Studio, as you probably know, we finished it actually, of drilling down through the details of Parks and Rec Identification Sign, and that's where we landed in that process, is what I just described to you for these HOA-owned parks and maintained parks that are also, happen to be open to the public. In the real world, for the most part, nobody anticipates, you know, me driving over from Cheshire Crossing to use this.
Well, see, and I would say, I would take, based on, based on what the amenities are in that, I would, I would expect that to actually occur.
I think in the larger Glen Ross amenities that went north of Cheshire Road, with some of the field and the bike paths, that's, I would agree with you, those are more impactful at a bigger scale. This section and section, I think 11, that went with it, is really more of these land amenities, and it's more self-contained. So I think it really is more a pocket park that has amenities that are too programmed, unlike a piece of plate, where they're programmed to, what anticipated is to be clientele in that section, in those sections. We have to kind of see how it goes and adjust with respect to these.
Gotcha.
Okay. Alright. Would the applicant like to come forward this evening? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
So, Brian Pranger, 5500 New Albany Road, Columbus, Ohio. I'm with EMHT, or the site civil engineer. I don't have any comments, but I'll answer questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant tonight? No concerns with any of the conditions or anything in the staff report?
No.
Brian, just while you're here, if you could make sure you take this back to your client, this Condition 6 on the Final Development Plan, when we went through preliminary development and planning, we had, there was a clear indication from council ultimately, to make sure that we had some form of, it's probably a very small pocket park, which ends up being now in Section 13 to the south of this.
Right, would that actually?
For the anticipated houses in that section.
Yeah, would it occur within Section 13, or would it?
Within 13.
Okay, yeah.
So, we just wanna, we highlighted that here as a staff recommended condition, so we don't lose that thread, understanding that these two sections are about the land
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve 2017-2815 with all staff recommendations.
amenities, and it makes sense to have its own pocket park, if you will.
Motion by Mr. Pearl?
Second.
Second by Mr. Badger?
But that's different than just the subdivision section to follow, and the main park, the
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
main park south of Cheshire is really planned on the east side of Winterborne, in whatever
Mr. Bonnet?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
section that is, so.
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Gotcha, yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It should not be new.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item B.
Alright, okay. Yeah, I'll.
Take that back and make sure they, they understand that, assuming that they agree
Could the clerk please read that into the record?
with that recommendation from council, though.
Item B, 2017-2904, a request by Tray Plus Communities for approval of a final development
I'm gonna assume they do. And that, just as a note for the commission, all of this area, in specific, in this one,
plan for Burr Oak Commons, containing 92 apartment units on approximately 20.06 acre
they are all located in the Delaware South New Community Authority.
Zone B3 PMU, and located on the north side of State Route 37, just west of Westfield
All of that will continue to pay for the Glen Ross parkland.
Shopping Center, and just east of Lantern Chase subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, this, history on this, last August, Planning Commission Council approved a rezoning
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. Are there any members of the public here tonight who wish to comment on this case?
to PMU, Plenary Development Plan and Conditional Use for, on this 20-acre site, for approximately
Alright, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
92 single-family apartment units, on, within 25 buildings.
I'll make a motion, we approve 2017-2814 with all staff recommendations.
Now, the applicant is requesting approval of the final development plan to finalize the details of initiating construction early next year.
Motion by Mr. Pearl?
Second.
Second by Mr. Badger?
Mr. Badger?
The engineering department is reviewing the engineering drawings as we speak.
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
This is a site plan, north is to the left on this, access would be from State Route
Mr. Bonnet?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
37, extend north into the development, the elite development, the private streets within the development, they all have to be built, constructed to public standards. There'd be a secondary access from the Westfield Hills Shopping Center, just south of the Kroger that extended to the site, it converges with the main entrance, just north of the retention pond, it's along State Route 37. And also, there's a third access, which is emergency access into the site, it's from behind the Kroger, it would extend between Buildings 3 and 6, and it extended to the first street there, the first east-west street. That would be constructed of grass pavers, there'd be balers at each end, our department can remove if necessary for an emergency. One item we need from the applicant is the street names for all these streets, where we can vet those to make sure that they're in compliance with all the other agencies and county. Pedestrian connectivity, the applicant would extend a bike path from Westfield Hills Shopping Center along just 30, State Route 37, through this site. Also, they are proposing pedestrian connectivity throughout the site, that would extend to the sidewalk along State Route 37, and to the Westfield Hills Shopping Center via the secondary access road. In the original, the Plenary Development Plan, conceptually contemplated was a access to the subdivision to the north, Lantern Chase subdivision. However, that is not being proposed in the development, because the resident to the north and the Lantern Chase Homeowners Association did not want such connection for various reasons. In the future, if needed, a sidewalk, if a sidewalk is desired by Treplus in the adjacent subdivision, they could install that at that time. As I indicated, there's 92 buildings, or 92 units and 25 buildings within the development. The retention pond that faces State Route 37, the northern portion of that will have about a three-foot-high retaining wall that would face State Route 37. Staff has recommended that be faced with limestone or bluebain limestone or the like, for aesthetic purposes. Also, there's a commons building located just north of the retention pond, in the secondary access drive, that would be for all the residents to utilize for various activities. The development would have 371 parking spaces, there'd be 164 garage spaces, 164 driveway spaces, 21, or 23 overflow spaces, and the commons clubhouse would have 20 spaces. So we believe there's more than sufficient parking within the site. Of the 25, of the 92 units, which would be between, in 25 buildings, between two and six units each, the buildings would be divided into 21-bedroom units, 34 two-bedroom units, and 38 two-plus bedroom units. Essentially, about 80% of the units would be two-bedroom. Each unit would have an attached garage with a patio or deck on the rear, it would encompass between 1,200 and 1,600 square feet, and there'd be a lot of amenities in the, in these apartments that would be tailored for the empty nester people. The clubhouse would also have a fitness center, a business center, a club road for yoga, cards and the like. Landscaping and screening, the applicant is proposing a comprehensive landscape package for private streets, the foundation of the building, and the criminal mounding and buffering. They're prepared, they are proposing 128 street trees throughout the development. Also, when this was approved, the buffering to the west and north, adjacent to the Lantern Chase subdivision, the zoning required a 12-foot-high buffer, minimum three-foot-high mound, the rest would have to be pine trees. Some of this mounding on the proposed plan does not meet that requirement. Along the southern portion, the western boundary, the grade slopes off significantly from the, from Building 1. Staff still requires that somehow they get a mound in there, or appropriate trees, to ensure that buffering is met, that 12-foot-high minimum screen is met. Also, the northern buffer adjacent to Lantern Chase, they have a three-foot undulating mound, that needs to be a three-foot-high consistent mound, with the appropriate height of the trees to get 12-feet of installation. Also, one of the requirements was that the pine trees be constructed or aligned in a staggered formation, they're not shown on the plan, it's just a simple row, so they have to do that staggered formation, that would create a better buffer in the future, mostly if one tree happens to die, or something similar to that. And also, on the plan, it's showing six to foot, six to seven-foot-high trees in installation, with three-foot mound, they'd have to be higher than that, than nine feet. I talked with the applicant about that, and they're, they indicated they would address that, either through a construction drawing, or discussing tonight with you, on those issues. Tree removal and replacement, they had, their tree survey identified 378 trees on the site that equaled almost 4,200 caliper inches. Just over 2,000 caliper inches would be removed, while preservation of 2,120 caliper inches would occur. So what they're preserving is more than what they're taking out. Staff recommends those areas be in a tree preserve, I think there's three areas within the site that would have to be within that preserve. If they do that, the proposal would achieve compliance with our tree preservation requirements in other recently approved developments that had tree replacement issues in the planned mixed-use overlaying district. Gateways and corridors plan, they're proposing two signs, the primary sign would be on State Route 37. This is the sign that they're proposing, it's about 60 square feet, and it would have, would require a Delaware, a bluebain limestone base, consistent with our gateways and corridors plan. They're proposing a secondary sign along the secondary entrance from the Westfield Shopping Center, that'd be about 18 square feet, with a similar base. Lighting plan, they're proposing 60 black light poles throughout the development, that'd be 16-foot-high maximum. The lighting plan was approved by the chief building official in November of this year. And here's some of the elevations, which were, these elevations are proposed buildings, which is what you saw at the Plenary Development Plan approval. A lot of lane coating is a limestone, there's some limestone walls, there's some birdie for Jordan Batten siding on here, and some vinyl siding, like a modern architectural style, that's in this enclave, if you will, between a subdivision and a commercial development. Staff recommends group approval of the final development plan with 11 conditions. You have to answer any questions you may have.
Lance, if I may speak, please? I spoke with Terry Davenport and Joel Bullis regarding the refuse pickup, and considering that there'll be concierge service available at this development, they requested that it be added to the language, that there be no exemptions or exceptions regarding the tip carts being placed at the end of the road, as required for refuse pickup. So if that could be added to, or amended into the staff recommendation, recommendation in some way, I would appreciate it.
Where else would they go?
My understanding is they can file for a variance or an exception, such that they don't have to bring the cart down to the end of the road, and that it either is picked up at the house or at the residence, and that the whole transfer by the resident doesn't happen to the end of the road or the end of the driveway. Does that make sense?
No, but I appreciate you filling us in on that, on that conversation. I guess what I would say here is that, as a plan development, it's always been the requirement for tip cart, for the separate pads, for those, sort of the in cul-de-sacs, if you will, to bring the tip carts out to those pads, and also down to the end of the driveway. So.
My understanding is.
I'm not aware there's a variance procedure.
My understanding is.
Refuse to ask for that, I don't, I think we just let Jane address that tonight, and say, Carrie, I understand what you said about trash, and we'll, we agree that we'll take the tip carts down to the, in the driveways, or to the pad areas, and be done with it, because I, I bet she'll say that.
It was just requested that if it could be written into some sort of agreement or documentation, so that they could refer to it in the future, should it become a problem, or perhaps Tray Plus isn't the owner or manager.
We could definitely put it on the final engineering plan as a development plan.
Thank you.
I don't see the first stop spinning for that, but that's okay. I have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Jane, thank you, to you and your team, everybody is assembled here. Commissioners, I'll tell you that, and I told you this before, I'll reiterate it, in working through to this final development plan, that Jane and her team has been really outstanding to work with, and I know the, our engineers feel that way as well. There were a lot of details to work through here, as you're well aware, and they've done a really good job at that, and it really spared no expense, to be perfectly honest with you, to, to do that as well. So we look forward to moving through this process and getting to construction. I'm fully in support of this development, there are a couple items I want to talk to you about tonight, and have a little conversations, see where you are, and maybe modify some of our recommendations as a result of those things. But I want to just make those remarks, and I don't want to steal any of Jane's thunder, because she may remark on this, but you might have noticed, I didn't get a chance to send you, there's a nice piece in the dispatch on Treplus, and sort of what they're doing, and how they're doing it, and this was maybe three weeks ago at this point, I want to say. And I think that, that, the Delaware one isn't ready to get off the ground yet, but I think that precipitated a lot of interest locally to Jane, and let her talk about that. But this is a good thing, a sort of a proof of concept and demand. We had some questions and discussion about that when it came through for signing in preliminary. So the two things I kind of want to highlight for you, and then let, let you ask questions, and let Jane do her presentation. Number one, in Condition 6, we talked about the buffering, and Lance brought it up, there is an area in the southwest, and maybe you could just circle it or something with the mouse there, Lance, since we can't use a pointer on the screen, where Treplus sits quite a bit above the grade of the adjacent houses, lots. Now, the houses sit a little bit above that, because the yards are, the yard. So, we need to understand that a little bit better, but in, for as limited an area as our engineers ultimately, and us can define together with them, assuming approval, what we'd like to do, it makes no sense to put a mound in, in that condition, very high. And it's difficult to do that anyway, but we wrote the condition, about the only way you could do that is to sort of cut the hill back, put a retaining wall in, then mound behind it, then the house is looking at more hardscape. I don't think that's, was ever the intention in that, in that kind of area. So. There's a nice piece in the Dispatch on Treplus and sort of what they're doing and how they're doing it in, this was maybe three weeks ago at this point, I want to say. And I think that, that, you know, the Delaware one isn't ready to get off the ground yet, but I think that precipitated a lot of interest locally to Jane and let her talk about that. But this is a good thing, a sort of a proof of concept and demand. We had some questions and discussion about that when it came through for signing in preliminary. So the two things I kind of want to highlight for you and then let, let you ask questions and let Jane do her presentation. Number one and condition six, we talk about the buffering and Lance brought it up. There is an area in the southwest, and maybe you could just circle it or something with the mouse there, Lance, since we can't use a pointer on the screen, where Treplus sits quite a bit above the grade of the adjacent houses, lots. Now, the houses sit a little bit above that because the yards are, the yard. So we need to understand that a little bit better, but in, for as limited an area as our engineers ultimately and us can define together with them, assuming approval, what we'd like to do, it makes no sense to put a mound in, in that condition, very high. And it's difficult to do that anyway, but we wrote the condition about the only way you could do that is to sort of cut the hill back, put a retaining wall in, then mound behind it, then the house is looking at more hardscape. I don't think that's, was ever the intention in that, in that kind of area. So my proposal is to allow, and you see it in the condition, to allow trees to fulfill that 12-foot required buffering. So we still get 12 feet. However, I've been doing this, I'm an arborist, but I've been doing this long enough to know they can get 12-foot trees and plant them. It'll be very expensive, but it can be done. But those trees tend not to survive that transplant. They don't grow as fast and they ultimately won't grow as high. We know that from our own city experience. So my suggestion would be to let, because you've got that grade change in there, not to do the mound and allow, you know, nine to 10-foot trees to go in, which I think are going to fulfill a lot of those ultimate buffering desires better. The trees will do better, they'll grow faster and they'll be, they'll be thicker and fuller. Again, that's a detail, I mean, we're, we're way down in the details there, but that's a detail that we would work through as staff or Treplus if you would, if you would entertain that. And we can work on changing the condition language later in the meeting if you want, if you're interested in that. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, and there's a sample board here, is the stone. We have some recommendations specifically condition four with respect to using Delaware blue vein limestone on the buildings. In this case, it's my opinion that we would modify that condition. I'd modify that for you right now to indicate that they have a very lovely, equally expensive, equally nice stone. You can see it right here. Culture stone that is a, it, the only difference is it's a ledge stone style and the size of the stones are a little bit different, but it's what they use in their typical project. I think that is sufficient for meeting, you know, the natural materials and stone requirements here. Most of this you're going to just see when you're on the site. The only exception I'd make to that is to use our Delaware blue vein limestone on the sign on State Route 37, which will fit in with this and be gateway and corridor compliant. And I think that'll help fit their business model a little bit and let us work more on that buffering. That's probably really more important at the end of the day because they've brought such a high quality to us. Condition five also relates to that a bit in the retaining wall where we note with the retaining wall, it should have Delaware blue vein limestone on it. I think we can find, if they use an integral system, which I'm assuming they will, of retaining wall, these are typically systems of retaining wall and they come in different colors and faces. We can work with them to find one that is pretty close, as close as we can get to the limestone look without having to have a retaining wall and then sticking face limestone on it as well. And still make sure it doesn't just look like split face block, which it could if we didn't do that process. So alternatively, it could also be faced with the ledge stone to fit exactly what they have with the buildings if we can't find one. And I think we would ask for a little bit of latitude. You've granted us this before to work with the applicant on those final details as well. When we wrote this and we're doing our recommendations, we obviously were writing it as we normally would. Yeah, this is nothing surprising to you, I'm sure, to see those conditions in it. In the last week or so and looking at their materials again, I think those are conditions that we would recommend and it's sort of modifications of the conditions to you. And again, we can work on the language of those here while Jane and you guys are talking. I'll work on some modification of this to maybe suggest to you. Very pleased with it. And then again, Jane, just thank you and your team for continuing to work with the city of Delaware. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
So Dave, these modifications that you want us to think about, is it financial? Is it because of the cost of the blue limestone or?
No, the cost is about the same. I think it's more, it's because it's their, this is really built into their performative business model. It goes with the siding and the siding colors and choices that they've made. And I think it's close enough to our Delaware blue vein that there's no reason to just force upon them a change to their normal product. In this case, it's high quality. We don't talk about that with applicants a lot because normally we're saying, oh, you have to upgrade your normal quality. For example, now too, we didn't have this up preliminary, the product is actually built in Dublin. I've driven down and looked at it personally. You know, it wasn't available to us before. They were still doing infrastructure and things. And it looks as high quality as it can look. So I, I think that's, I think that's fair to them. They also requested to, to look at that a little bit and I think that was a fair request in this case. It's plan development, so we can do that.
I guess my only concern is, and I'm not that much against it, is just that in the past, we have held pretty standard with this blue limestone.
We have.
We have been, you know, pretty much told the contractors, that's what's going to be used.
We have.
Now, all of a sudden, now we're saying, well, yeah, I just wonder where it stops. You know, I've seen where, I'm sure you remember, the bank wanted to use their colors-
Right.
-for the bank. Oh, no. No, we can't allow that because it doesn't fit in with what we have.
Understand.
All right? So I'm always concerned with the consistency of what we do. And once we start making changes, we open up a slippery slide that isn't really an end to it. You know what I'm saying? I, as I say, I don't mind, I know things change. But if we're going to make a change, then maybe we should make that change for anything that comes up that we say, well, you don't have to use the blue line. There are some other types you could use. But I'm just wondering if that's what we want to use. When we tell them on the sign, they have to use a blue limestone. And, and, you know, so I'm just, you understand my concern?
I understand. I understand. Certainly onsite as we have our gateway and corridor plan, we've been as rock solid consistent as is possible to be with that. I wouldn't change that on this sign. I think they're fine with it. This is interior to the site. It's all, it's a private development site. All the roads are private. And they use, if I, maybe Jordan can run and get the blue vein material board. Literally when you hold those two up, now they only have three pieces. They don't have a full material board. It's pretty doggone close. I mean, about that far apart, not that far apart. So I certainly think we have to make that judgment call and I agree with you, be consistent. I don't think we're necessarily being inconsistent in this case. And that's why I'm recommending it to you. But again, that's why I bring it up because I want, I need consensus from you and ultimately from counsel in that regard, as does the applicant. We've talked about this, so this is not new to Jane this evening, this discussion on the stone, so. And I think, I think she would move forward with this condition, but she's asked for a little bit of consideration in this regard too. At least I've given that from the staff level, but I don't make that final call.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, question not, not in the limestone or culture stone category. At, at preliminary, we talked about potential for signage internal to help direct, whether it's visitors or residents, you know, through the shopping center to a street light. Have you had any discussions with applicant on that?
I don't think beyond the secondary sign that basically connects the shopping center to their, to their other access point here. I'll let Jane address that when she comes up. But we could, we could do, having signers at the shopping center, we'd have, they'd have to work with Kilken who manages that shopping center. Here's the, there's a blue vein sample board. So some of them are a little bit more blue vein-y and some of them aren't. These are two we have. We've actually allowed other varieties of our sample boards there. That's just two. And they change names constantly. So some of them are Sandusky Shores and Lake Erie Shores and this shore and that shore, but they're sort of in that family. I think probably the biggest, sorry, the biggest difference in those stones is that this typically is applied with a tool joint between each stone and this is a, this is a, what we call sort of a dry-lead stack, but it wouldn't necessarily have a joint. Theoretically, you get more stone out of this. That matters to you. Does that answer your previous question? Best we can, maybe let Jane address that a little bit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll wait for the, okay.
All right. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? Just state your name and address for the record.
Jane Arthur Roslevick, 1515 Lakeshore Drive, 43204. Thank you. Having us back again. And to David's point, we've, our whole team has thoroughly enjoyed working the staff of Delaware. Won't say that every city is this, this easy to work with. As David also said, we had a really nice article in the Dispatch and also in Business First. Over the last 10 days, we opened our first project in Dublin on November 8th. And we are moving people in. We've got the phase project, so we've got our first residents in. And the even better news was we got emails and lots of inquiries from people from Delaware, Delawareans who've lived here a long time and will know where this, the first time we ever mentioned that we were considering developing in Delaware publicly. And so we have people already who've been down to our site who want to move into Burrow, which I think is, they, two of them live half-mile from our project, which was, I thought, something that you would want to know. So we're excited and, and really happy with the way the plan is turning out. And we've had good discussions with Westfield Shopping Center on that whole third access issue. And we've been talking to homeowners association about why we didn't do the north entrance. So that's worked out well. To add, we do have street names. One's Lurch Lane. I think we only needed two. And West Terry Way. And, and to your point on the signage, we haven't worked, we haven't completed our signage plan yet. And I know that we'll be working with engineering on that. So I, I can't give you anything specific, but we know that we, you know, we know what we need to address. And I don't know, I don't know how to give you any more detailed answer than that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have this condition just as a helpful suggestion to get eastbound somehow, some way without coming out, you know?
Right.
The 37 directly type of thing, just more of a suggestion type of thing.
Right, right. So we'll be working with engineering and signage throughout the whole project as well as far as parking signs and that sort of thing. So-
Just to jump it, so you guys don't normally see this part of subdivision process, but on the street name thing, we, we always require all the developer to propose street names on all the streets. We follow our protocol in terms of loop or not loop. So we'll do the same thing with them. What, what Lance was talking about in the condition is really about just make sure we get that from them because sometimes it can lag and hold up a plat filing. In this case, there is no plat, but we have to also make sure there's no duplicates in the county to the road names or something, sometimes even close. Safety forces don't want it close. And in the age of GIS and Joint 911 and that sort of thing, that's, becomes more and more important. So we will handle that issue at staff level for the city as per normal.
As far as the stone issue goes, we've worked really hard having Treplus Communities. It's very much something that when, when our potential resident pulls up, they, that's a Treplus Communities. And we have a very distinct look. We didn't want to compete with the EPCON or Redwood or, and we wanted very much residential feel. We, we lean more to, to a contemporary look. Some say a prarian because of the mixed use of product. The reason that we picked this stone was, first of all, the residential use, but it is a more contemporary in keeping with the style of architecture that we use. And, and this, the, the edge is softer on here than on the product that we use. So that's, that is why we gave pushback to switching over. We also feel like we want to be a residential product. We don't, we, I mean, I know that you could look at us as a commercial use, but, but we want it to feel like a home. We don't want it to feel like they're moving into a shopping center, you know? I mean, and, and we were totally fine with doing the corridor. We, we get the other corridor and that, that was fine with us. But that's why we would like to keep the, the stone that we used it at Hawthorne Commons in Dublin and Redwood Commons in Pickerton. And so it's just what, what we like to do. I think that's all, those are the only comments that I have to address. And as far as the mounding, I think we're just going to be working through all of that on the engineering side. Carrie and Jonathan and Matt?
There were some sections on the grading plan. The landscape plan and the grading plan were fully coordinated, but we, in looking at the grading plan, there were some sections of the mound, particularly on the north, well, north and the west side where the mound would undulate and even go down to sort of zero grade. So we've talked about this, that, that, it just has to be there. And between the engineering teams, ours and the private side, they need to figure out if they need to do a catch basin and pipe under a mound, what they got to do to have the mound and the trees. So I think Jane and her team understand that, our engineers understand that, and they're just going to do it. I think we all sat in front of the neighbors and the community and required that. That was an important thing coming through the text and the development plan. It's important to make sure we execute on that.
Also, Carrie, to address the tip, I, I mean, we'll talk about it, but, you know, that is what we do. So let us think that all the way through. And I know that we did provide the pads that, that we were, we were asked to require for those cul-de-sacs, so.
Right. I think the third, the concern just came from if you were no longer the management company and it changed, if that language wasn't ingrained somewhere, that variances or exceptions, I forget the terminology, which it is, that they may ask for that at that time.
I think because of granting agency administratively for a variance, one solution would be just to say no. But the, the other solution would be to just say, rather than a whole bunch of language, you can't ask for a variance to that.
And I'm not, I'm not anticipating the developer being the variance requister. It's the citizen-
Right.
-saying, may I have a variance? I cannot get my cart for this reason or another from my garage.
I understand it. I think we need to work through that.
Yeah, no doubt. I just didn't want to be remiss in bringing that comment forward.
Those are all my comments.
Yeah, any questions for the applicant?
No, I have a question though for Dave. On the, on the bike path that we go in, who's responsible for maintaining there?
Bike path? Technically, that section of bike path will be the adjacent property owner's maintenance I can't remember all the discussion of this path, whether we're treating it like an arterial path and that we're, they're going to build it and we'll maintain the full section. I'd have to get that answer for you from Ted.
We've talked about it. Anybody else remember? Ted, typically it'd be anymore, we used to sit, we used to piecemeal it up and that's created some problems. Typically anymore, we've put that maintenance on the adjacent property. So we'll, sometimes there is none and then it does.
I'm making up to make sure we get that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public here this evening that would like to speak on this case? All right, seeing none, I'll bring you back to the commission. Do you want to talk about language adjustments?
Yeah, well, it'd be on number, sounds like on number four particularly type of thing.
Yeah, four, five, and six. I have, I have some suggestions to entertain them. On item four, after the word limestone or equivalent, I would just add- On item four, after the word limestone or equivalent, I would just add, try to keep this simple, or equivalent ledge stone as proposed by the applicant and leave the rest.
And you would do the same in four and five, correct?
I would do the same in four and five. And in six, last sentence may require a section of 12-foot tall evergreen trees. Granted, this starts with a may, not a shall. I would say may require a section of 10-foot tall evergreen trees if a mound is not possible to turn by.
So how we're changing is 12 to 10?
That is what I propose, yeah. And again, to be clear, that would be just for the most minimal amount of run we can, and then we pick up that mound right away.
Okay. Can we do this as, as one motion or do we need to do a motion for each individual item? Just for some direction?
I think you should probably do each individual one.
Okay.
As an amendment to the staff recommendations and a vote on it, if that's your pleasure. As amended.
All right, what's the wish of the commission on this?
I'll take a stab at number four. I'd move to modify item or condition number four to change the last line. Delaware blue vein limestone or equivalent ledge stone as approved by staff.
Motion by Mr. Badger. Second.
Second by Mr. Proll.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansour?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Okay.
I've moved to modify staff condition recommendation number five in the last line to be blue vein limestone or equivalent ledge stone as approved by staff.
Motion by Mr. Badger? Second, second by Mr. Proll.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansour?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
And for number six?
So six won't be too restrictive if you just still, if you went with the 10? If you still need a little more leeway?
Uh, no, I think 10 will work. I really do. Jane, you can, now's a moment to chime in if you don't agree with that, but typically the evergreen trees would come in six to eight foot is typically what you'd see.
Yeah.
You can get 10. When you get up to 12, it gets, that gets difficult. And we also, we also have a may in here because we obviously have to figure out exactly how far this is, and maybe they can do a mound too. So we have a little wiggle room in there, I think. But it's, you could say eight to 10 if you wanted to, to give us a little bit of discretion in that regard.
Well, nobody else will. I'm conclusion. Recommendation number six, again, in the, the final line, may require a section of eight to 10-foot tall evergreen trees, et cetera, et cetera.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Proll.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yeah.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansour?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
What's the wish of the commission in regard to 2017-2904?
I'll move to approve item 2017-2904 as amended in recommendations four, five, and six, and all other recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger? Second, second by Mr. Proll.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Councilman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansour?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
These days I'll make the motion and I'll wait.
Moving on, item number four, the planning director's report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate your indulgence on the last case and working that way. So that's what you're here for. Appreciate it. Wanted to give you a quick little update on the comprehensive plan and the RFP process of staff. We received five back, I think I've mentioned that to you before, maybe via email, from consultant teams, which is not unusual for this size project. They are all super high-quality teams, super high-quality consultants, as expected, that want to work in our community and help us through this process, this important process. Staff reviewed those, multi-department staff has reviewed those, scored them, and I've at least turned in a preliminary recommendation to the city manager that we hope to contract with him the next week or so. So let the manager go through his process and then we'll be ready to tell you how that comes out. But that's where we are in the process, and I think right on time, right on schedule. I'm looking to go into 2018 and jump into the process of which you will all be integral parts. So more meetings, unfortunately, but, but very good and needed, necessary ones. Going to have to do a facilitator training with, with you guys and our steering committee approach and that sort of thing, and I'm, I'm sure you'll all be enthusiastically on board with that. Obviously, Plan Committee, it's in your name, Plan and Commission is integral to the comprehensive plan, so I'm excited. It's going to be fun. It's going to be a busy development year shaping up that way in 2018 from what we can see. So with our limited staff and the comprehensive plan and some of the other initiatives, it's going to be a challenge for us, but if everybody's pulling together, we'll do a good job on all of it. Lance, do you want to mention, the only thing I want to mention is January 17th is the next meeting, and we moved that meeting, if you'll recall. So a little more time, I guess, if you don't want to count the holidays in there. What do we, what do we have coming up?
Right now, we have one item coming, Delmar Apartments, proposing apartments on Firestone Drive. They bought, under contract, they have an option for a piece of property. Anticipating, we have a log jam coming, one of these months we're going to be overwhelmed. So might be this month, I'm not sure yet. Might be February.
Find out like Christmas, right?
Yeah. Probably.
Carrie or Jonathan have anything you want to add or updates on projects for the GoTo Commission?
Are there any projects you desire an update on? We're still running strong on many.
Yeah, if I may, one that, one in winter 12, which we discussed previously, I do anticipate providing comments for their second engineering submittal. So the engineering side is essentially nearing completion, only very minor issues to be worked out before we have approvable engineering plans. And then not only agenda tonight, but a future phase of Winterborne, which is section 15. We have also received a submittal on, that is on the east side of Winterborne, which that is out of sequence with what was previously approved. I just noticed in the staff report tonight for 12 made mention of if they did that out of sequence, additional emergency access would be required. So that's just a, maybe a heads up for what's coming.
As we know, you know, we put the emergency access, council put the emergency access in on this side of Winterborne that we dealt with tonight. What Jonathan's alluding to is that we've alerted the developer to this to be prepared to put in a similar emergency access that, that may end up being temporary really on that side until you work your way down Winterborne and you have other ways to get it. We should, we felt like we should be consistent with ourselves in that regard. Developer was not overly enthused with that idea. See what we get.
They generally aren't if it costs them more money.
That, that part's understandable.
Plus, you know, I mean, the, we understand the need for it, but you know, if you just talk about a look of a neighborhood, it kind of looks strange. It looks out of place when you drive down, you see all this amenities, blah, blah, blah. Hey, look, what is that? You know, type, type thing, even if it's got the balustrades and the rotten block and stuff like that. So, I mean, you could see that's a look type of thing, saying this is.
It's hard not to make it look like a road because.
It's a road.
That's what it is. And if you, if you know we cut it, it was to be 20-plus feet wide and it got cut down, I think, to 12. So we did work with the fire department to just cut it down to as minimal as we could. But I think the landscaping component of that becomes important to try to just soften it a little.
Paint it brown or green, right?
Yeah. Then you got maintenance. Then it'll start flaking off.
Blend it in or something, you know?
It places, now that's a long drive, and it places where we can, like Treple's, if we can use an eco stone or eco paver, I think it softens the look a little bit.
Long.
This, this one's, it's just a long road. I can envision a time in the future when that connects to a bike path on the south side of Cheshire, a long time from now, where you could make it, you could integrate it a little bit better to the, but I, you're right, I agree with you. It's hard to do, it's just hard to do that.
Okay. Commission member comments and discussion? Got nothing?
Just looking over the comprehensive plan that will be replaced, clearly says to how much in that, with respect to the development, both commercial and residential, that they had written back then anticipating 10 to 12, 15 years later, how much of that really did come true or how accurate was it? Because I would think that having some of that information would go a long way in planning for the next 10 to 15 years. So I don't expect you to answer that now, but I'm just kind of curious as to how close they were in anticipating the development, both commercial and residential.
Is a great point. And one of those steps in the process early on is going to be to account for a lot of metrics. One of them is how much have we implemented the plan, that sort of thing that you're talking about as well, for the market study component on it. And I think this plan really has to have, clearly the markets changed quite a lot, but an updated market study is, was in our RFP and RFQ, and all the teams responded that they would do that. But also a sort of a financial impact kind of study or model so that getting towards a sort of financial sustainability of whatever the planned components are that end up being proposed. Obviously, we're always talking about budget and how we maintain various systems as the city and just the community in general. So that, that fiscal impact analysis, if you will, becomes an important component as well. The consultant team we've recommended has the subconsultants and disciplines on their team that are fully prepared to do this, two things. So that you will have your afternoon agonizing detail shortly.
I mean, will we probably see things as crazy as turning Route 23 into a boulevard so that it would be allowed both east and west to access by pedestrian walkways and things?
Well, I, you know, that's one of the components of this plan that the engineers always like to chuckle at for obvious reasons, but I found rather visionary in that plan and not a bad thing to have in a comp plan to think about how you might really connect two sides of the river and re, and activate the river. Is anybody lowering 23? No. I mean, it's pretty obvious, but you know, those kinds of thought, bigger thoughts aren't, aren't bad because if you don't think them, they're for sure going to occur. But I, you know, is that going to endure? I, you know, want to talk about that. It's one of the things on the table to talk about.
I'm not going to hold my breath.
Yeah. I recall at the time of the last comprehensive plan and before that, the Sawmill Parkway was sort of one of those big idea kind of things that felt unachievable in a lot of ways, maybe up till really recently. And because it's been in plans and because people have been talking about it, because development has progressed, lo and behold, we're here with it. So that's kind of the thing, if we, if you're not going to think big and dare to dream big in a comprehensive plan, there's really no point in doing it. But we also have to think strategically in small pieces and what we can achieve as well. Have to do both of those things.
Just on that Robin property, what are they doing with it? I mean, they're digging holes, are they trying to retention basin in or, you have any idea what they're doing?
Yeah, I think, I think what they're doing is sort of starting down the path of, we have the concept plan here, but that's it. And they're kind of starting down the path of that plan, and they know, George knows full well, he's got a still, nothing proved in terms of that plan, but he does have the right to pry the pond, it's not spring fed, it's not otherwise fed, so he had the right to drain the pond, and that's what he did, as far as we know. And he has the right, he has a floodplain permit in right now to just do a small bit of balanced cut and fill, which is, I think, what you're referring to, and also a tree clearing permit to take down a few trees to do that. Basically, take the muck out of the bottom of the pond, put it down in the floodplain, take the soil from the floodplain and put it up in the pond area. So it's just balanced. And we're still reviewing those permits. We know he's, we know that work is ongoing, so assuming that the work happens in accordance with those permits and we end up approving those permits, it'll be approved. As of now, we haven't approved it. That's the best update I can give you right now.
He's moving around in a floodplain that he hasn't been approved to move around here. Is that?
That's correct. As of now, that's technically correct, although he's turned in his permits and talked to us about that. So I want to be fair on the other side too. It's, it's not that it's just happened and we don't know about it.
I suppose the city's happy with it as far as me.
I didn't say that.
Not the process I went through.
I didn't say that.
Well, I mean, it's not the process I went through.
I'm not, I personally, as the development director, I'm not particularly happy with the way the process has occurred so far.
Because I couldn't.
But I don't necessarily have to be happy with it.
I couldn't do anything until I had all my permits.
Correct. And you're not supposed to.
I just couldn't have to. Now, all of a sudden, you know.
Well, and I think if and when, he may end up not doing anything with respect to the development plan, this just be it. He may end up bringing a development plan, a zone change in front of you, and I certainly think those are fair questions to ask at that time.
I just wondered, I saw it over there and I thought, boy, this moves along a lot quicker.
I agree, sir.
Other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays.
I certainly do.
I got nothing. I know, I know, I got nothing.
Holy cow.
So just want to say thank you so much for the emails that you've been sending lately. It's good to be informed as somebody that has two little ones that keep every other minute of my life busy. Thank you. It's good to hear all those. As we get closer to getting the comprehensive plan going, as far out on calendars as we can know, dates and extra meetings, please, again, I'm speaking selfishly, but everybody, I believe, is very busy. And so as much as we can get calendars penciled in and tentative dates even, or just something for holding, that would be really appreciated so that we can devote the time that we need to for it. It's a.
Great point.
Very important plan. And you're right, that's what we're here for. So want to make certain we're available for those. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Nothing except happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Be safe.
Same here. Happy holidays to everybody and enjoy your Happy New Year and your consolation bowl game.
They sound like a thin sheet to you.
All right, so our next regular meeting, as David stated, is January 17th, 2017. We shall see you all back here then. We shall see you all back here then, and anybody know of any scheduling conflicts with the 17th right now? Everybody seems to be good? All right, so we're adjourned at 8:10.